Good evening, Central Indiana. I dragged that out because I didn't know if my mic was on there for a minute. Welcome to Portside Live from JTH Construction Studio. Where I am joined by the lovely Bethany Latham. She's a rookie.
She is a rookie now.
I haven't done that in a long time.
How we doing Beth?
Doing okay.
Rookie mistake. Hey, I've done it. I've done it. I've done it. And Mr. Don Lips. Guys know him from all over town and he's a school board president. Remember? We will get to him momentarily. Let me talk about the sponsors. American Basement Solutions, Larry Ralph Senior, one eight seven seven four zero nine two eight five seven. I better get that. Something to say about Larry. We just took some supplies down to Florida. This guy's been involved with every hurricane and every natural disaster of this side of the Mississippi pretty much since nineteen ninety-two. And when he puts his mind to it. He makes it happen. And we just found out about an hour ago, the supplies made it down to Inglewood, Florida. And Larry's. Larry's already looking another trip with with construction workers and his his people going down there, but. Clean Burl Tenschner and Larry and the whole crew. Thank you. God bless you guys. And Eric Lashbrook. Hope we got everything you need. Anyway, that's the type of man Larry Ralph is. Baton Real Estate, three semester, seven six five three four one eight nine one one. Drink the Creek Cedar Creek. It's the last weekend in Fort this year in it, Beth.
It is.
You got hair bangers and big eighties?
Yeah.
Woo, a lot of eighties out there. That'll be a fun one. Blanin Boys Lawn Care, seven six five three one five nine six five six. Findhelp.org with Judge Williams. Get on there, look around that site if you need help of any kind. Wayman's Furnish Appliance Mattress, seven six five three four two four three three nine. He's got another big fall sale going on right now. I saw his post today. Go over and tell Mark we said hello. Wellsprings with Bob Goodrum, seven six five three four six sixty six sixty one. I think Bob has a birthday every other week is for some reason. I see his name on there. He's gotta be ninety-five now. Stid's Comfort Systems, seven six five three four six zero one nine five. Which not, it's not on here tonight. Rob Helms would be happy. Who's your webner? Three one seven six four zero four three nine eight. And of course Logan's Cosmos at Hair Diva, seven six five three one eight three three eight eight. And that's it. If you'd like to be a sponsor show, get ahold of myself or Beth. We always have room for more sponsors, don't we?
We do.
We love sponsors.
We love sponsors.
Lots going on this week. We've got the fall foliage. We've got the chili cookoff coming up. We've got tomorrow's a big day for Valita Pritchy. Can you talk a little bit about that real quick before we get to Dawn? The honor ride.
I just put her on the spot. Know the details.
But there's a gentleman coming through to honor Ryan and.
Chris, Linda?
Yeah, eighteen of them that died.
He's on it. He's on a bicycle. He's traveling. I don't remember where he started, so I don't remember all the details.
Colorado, maybe?
I don't know. He's traveling a very long distance honoring, is it eight soldiers?
I thought it was eighteen. Could be wrong. Maybe it was eight.
See, we're horrible.
He's honoring Ryan. We know that.
Yes, we. He's, he's stopping at Mount Pleasant Cemetery in Hall or in Monrovia tomorrow. Somewhere between eleven thirty, noon, somewhere in that way. He's on a bike, so it's hard to know exactly what time he's gonna show up. It was supposed to be right around eleven. Now he's saying it's probably a little more around noon. Lita was saying there is a van following him. They're documenting all of this. They're gonna be turning it into a documentary.
That's awesome.
That's really cool. Yes, so he is going to be stopping at Mount Pleasant Cemetery in Hall. And she said he may then come to Martinsville to the memorial. Yeah. But that's not a for sure thing, but whoever would like to come out to Mount Pleasant. I'll be out there, Kevin.
I want to try to be there. Corey's gonna try to be out there. One of us will go live.
Yeah.
No promises.
Bruce McKee will be out there and the honor.
Yes, they're gonna play taps and hold on yards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll all be out there. So yeah, whoever can get out there, it'll make it a great afternoon.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
I, yeah, I was like.
All right.
Should know the details.
Now, now it's the man of the hour. Mr. Lips, how you doing, sir?
Great, Kevin. How are you doing?
I love it. What do you think about this fall weather? You liking it?
This is gorgeous.
I love this.
As it gets.
Yeah, I'm loving it.
I'm thinking that bicycle guy and great weather for him.
Oh, yeah. Couldn't imagine riding across anywhere with the humidity we've had.
I think he's continuing south, right? So that's good. So if we have that cold weather kind of.
Yeah.
Hey, before we get started, I just want to thank you and Portside, Bethany and all your staff here for. Your continued success here in our community, all the great things that you do.
With people like that individual there, you know?
Yeah, she's, she's a motor. She's active.
I, I.
Uh, thanks for everything you do for citizens of our community.
We enjoy it and and.
Oh, I know you do.
To a person.
Yeah, I know you do.
Talking Reds, talking Reds baseball. Another fine member of our community at Portside. No, um, we have a fabulous group of people that care about the community and. Willing to do, go above and beyond. And when you have individuals like her, I mean, you talk about a rock star. I, I seriously the other night, I know she's, she's blowing me off. The same thing I would do to her. I seriously, at some point in time in this city, they're gonna, they're gonna have you win the Bethany Latham Award for doing something.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, you, the, I thought, think I'm busy. What are you doing? I just got out of a meeting. I'm going to a meeting and then I got a meeting tonight. I'm like, you serious? She's worse than me, so.
Yeah, it's, it's not just the fact that she's busy and she's involved in so many things, but isn't she the person that's in charge of you? And your staff here at Portside?
Hundred percent.
Guys on.
Hundred percent. I think she's, she's, she's done like five campaigns. Some of them she hadn't had the greatest luck on, luck on, but we won't get into that on this side of the table. But um, she's involved in boards and MCLA and and just all sorts of important things. And that's the kind of individual we like to have here and we wish our community would have more individuals like that because so many team, and I'm. Being rude and honest, but people do a lot of this, but nobody wants to.
Right.
Put rubber to the road.
Right.
And she doesn't do any of this and she still puts rubber to the road. So. Anyway.
Anyway.
Anyway, she's not the star tonight. We can't talk about that.
Yeah, she is.
Yeah, she's always a star. We know that. Um, I have known you a very long time and I want to thank you. I heard something the other day. And it come from a coach, Eric. Remember old Dave?
Oh, yeah.
He said, back in the day, you had guys like Coriel, who all you had to do is say. Go run through that wall and he was gonna do it no matter what. And I like to think that image and that thought in my mind and that characteristic. Was put into me of the programs that we had, starting at a very young age. Um, summer weight program or whatever they called it back then, even before then. But a lot of the poor kids here in town, including myself, didn't have anything to do. And if it wasn't for programs like that, I'm not, there's no telling where I would have ended up. Because so many kids fall through the cracks, but things like that. Put that team mentality in a structure and, you know, you're gonna go to Martinsville, you're gonna graduate, you're gonna do this and this and this. You're gonna wear them gold pants.
Yeah.
So get, put some effort into it and that's what we, we did. And thanks to you guys and Mr. Taylor, who now we don't speak of because he's up in Mooresville, but. You know, there's a, I've seen Bobby Payne and just on down the list.
Right.
And, uh, but gentlemen like yourself brought that to Martinsville and Sam and on down the line.
Oh, absolutely. There's a multitude of people. I mean, you could sit here all night and just name off people that have been very influential, but.
Yeah.
You know, you're, you're right. I think that's a, you know, I've been in this business a long time and I think that's the fun part of the education.
Fifty years in this community?
Fifty years and that's a long time.
Yeah.
Um, but that's been the fun part. The fun part has been, um. You know, I've been in a position where I've had the ability to create opportunities for kids to be active, be involved.
Right.
Because that's how they learn.
Right.
And that's how they gain confidence and that's how they learn to grow and move on in society.
Yeah.
So I've been very fortunate.
Just off the top of my head, I know you did bitty ball. I still got the shirt in there somewhere and it doesn't fit, but I still got it. On, you know, summer weight program every year, every year. It was original art, arty little basketball was bitty ball.
Okay.
And that shirt's about this big, but it had a basketball on it. Did Martin's art season on the back. It had every varsity player for that year. And I, I had one of the original ones, original ones still left for a long time and Keenan Steinway had one and I was trying to find mine to show him. Coach, coached basketball every level. You got into YMCA, it just on down the line. And then what? In twenty eighteen, you decided, hey, it's time to do school ball.
Yeah, I, um, you know, I've, I've been here a long time and, and I've seen.
You squeezing the lips.
Yeah, I've, uh, you know, seen the education through a lot of different lenses. You know, I started as a teacher. I was a coach. Of course, I was an athletic director for twenty-one years.
Right.
Uh, and then when I retired in two thousand eighteen, I had been on the board of directors at the YMCA for several years. Uh, but when I retired as the athletic director. I kind of, uh, you know, wanted to get some weekends back. I loved my job. I loved every part of it. And you know, there's eighty, ninety hour work weeks. That didn't bother me because I'm going to ball games.
And you love it.
My job. I loved it. Uh, but I just kinda wanted to have some weekends and, uh. So I decided to make that decision or made that decision to retire and then I've been on the board of directors and coincidentally, the job, uh. Had opened up doing basically the same thing that I was doing at the high school, just on a smaller scale. So.
Right.
I'm the healthy living director. I'm in my fifth year at the YMCA. Uh, we have nineteen sports leagues. Uh, still working weekends, so I wasn't very smart from that standpoint.
Still working weekends.
But that plan didn't work. Uh, but I'm still, you know, creating opportunities for kids to participate and, and learn and grow, so.
Do you ever stop? Do you ever just stop? Take breath?
I don't want to. Yeah. I mean, you know, I've, I've stayed active, but that's my choice. Um. You know, I feel like I've been fortunate. I've been in pretty good health, so I'm able to do these kinds of things and I enjoy doing them. And. As you know, it's, it's not work if you enjoy doing it. They may call it work, but if you enjoy doing something, um, you know, it's okay to do it.
Right. So you went from, you transitioned from athletics to, to school board. Um. I'm gonna play real dumb. Explain to me if you would, roles of the school, school board. You're the president, correct?
That's correct.
And you've been that since eighteen or twenty?
Yeah, just for two years.
Twenty twenty.
Direct, yeah.
What is the role of the school board member? What, what, what all, what all do you guys do and who do you answer to and how you go about that? Cause. I, I won't get into it, but I get into arguments a lot. I don't know if you've noticed that online, but, um. When someone talks about something they don't understand and they, they blame you guys, so. Just, it's just like when I was on plan commission, we got blamed for construction and still trying to figure that one out.
Right, right.
Tell us a little bit if you would.
Yeah, um, you know, the buck stops with the school board because we are the upper echelon. However. Uh, we basically, if you were to, in its simplest form, uh, the Indiana School Board Association would tell you that the school board. Has basically three roles. Uh, number one is to hire the superintendent and to evaluate and oversee the superintendent. Uh, number two, it would be to oversee the budget, make sure that our budget is in line. Uh, and, um. You know, those, those are the two main things. Um, and then, uh, the third thing that we do is. Obviously look at curriculum. Uh, so we have to oversee curriculum, but we're not in charge of curriculum.
Which, yeah, creates an issue on a different level.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Um. So in four years. Tell us a little bit about some things you've got accomplished and you're proud of and that's brought to the city, to the system.
Well, um, you know, there's a number of things that we're proud of. Um. And I'd say that, you know, when you run for school board, every candidate is gonna say that they, um, are gonna try to improve transparency. Uh, you know, we work for the public. We're servants of the community. It's very important that we have the open door policy and we allow people what we're doing. Um, we took that very seriously. I'm very proud to say that over the course of the time that I've been on the school board, we've done several things. That has improved our transparency. Uh, we started out by having, uh, community forums, but we basically had four forums. Uh, open to the community. Uh, one was for educators, uh, elementary on one and then secondary on the other. And these forums were designed for us to listen. Um, you know, we let people speak, give us your concerns, you know, we're interested in knowing what bothers you. What you like, what you don't like. Uh, we had one for parents of our students in our district. And then we had a fourth one for just anybody in our community wanting to come in and ask questions or express a concern or make a comment. So. Started out by having open forums so we can get a feel for what the public was interested in. And we, we did watch and listen. That was all about the school board listening. And then we, uh, the next thing that we did is we changed board policy. Uh, prior to that, um. When you came to a board meeting, you were only allowed to speak, uh, if it was on an agenda item.
Right.
So if you wanted to talk about something in our district, it wasn't an agenda item, then you were not able to do that. So we changed school board policy, uh, and now we have, and we've done this now close to two years. Uh, where we have the forum at the end of the board meeting, uh, where a person in the community, uh, can come up and he can, uh, speak about anything that he wants to speak about.
Which is a big change.
It's a big change. Yeah, that was huge.
Getting on the school board agenda was like pulling teeth out of Rhino's butt. It just wasn't gonna happen.
Yeah, it was. And, you know, we try to make it easy for people to do that. We try to make them feel comfortable. Uh, even though there's gonna be things said that we may not like.
Right.
Or that we may disagree with, but again, that's the open forum. Sure it is. Sure it is. And then, uh, in addition to that, we have, uh, obviously you probably know that we have our, we stream our board meetings now, so they are live. Uh, you can go on our website and you can view them. Uh, so, uh, if you weren't able to watch live or if you weren't able to attend. Uh, you can go and watch a replay of it on our website.
I can tell you this from this, from this chair over here, this group right here. You guys have been the most transparent. Open board.
Right. And.
Open board. Um, I went to a meeting once a few years ago and I'm not gonna name names, but, um, this was. For you guys, for the current board. And I saw some very angry folks about some changes they were making. And these people poured their heart. You can see the passion for what they were talking about. This went on probably for an hour or so. And when that last breath left, that voice got, told him his mouth. And he said, that's all I got to say. Buddy, they voted instantly and there was only one man. That voted against what they were trying to do because he sat there like I did and heard every complaint and that was you. And I will never forget that moment because I think that was the most cold hearted, for lack of better, I won't even say what I want to say. But. Just you, you hit it right on the head. When your constituents say they want to do A, B, and C. Now, do they speak for everybody? No. But if everybody wants to speak, then they need to go show up. That's the issue.
Sure.
So if there's forty people there and they're speaking all the same language and they want this. And those that they've elected are telling them, no, there's an issue. Big time. And you and I talked after that and you knew and I knew what was up and that was embarrassing for our community. And a lot of that's been rectified.
Yeah, I believe it has. And, uh, you know, in addition to that, uh, you know, we're proud of those things that we've done and. Um, it was very difficult to get information because the public wasn't into it. It wasn't out there.
Right.
So we also now, all documents are, uh, on our website forty-eight hours prior to the board meeting.
See, that's just.
And when I say all documents, I'm talking about everything that I would see as a board member.
Right.
So you as a public citizen can go in there and you can look and see what's on the agenda. And you can be prepared when you come to the board meeting. So I think that's been a, a very important thing and, um. And I think transparency is important, but I'm very proud of the fact that we have accomplished that. We have made changes. We just didn't say we were going to, but we did make changes for that. So that, that's one thing. Um, I, and along that same line, um, I think we're doing a really good job, uh, here, uh, over the course of the last couple of years. Uh, of, uh, communicating with our public. Uh, we're doing a lot of different, uh, forums. We're doing a lot of different, uh, avenues where we get information after the public. The citizens. Uh, we have bi-monthly newsletters that go out to our entire district school community. Uh, we have weekly emails that go out. They're called Weekly Scoop. Uh, we have weekly videos.
And this is so, this is so different than just four or five years ago.
Sure.
I mean, this is astronomical different.
Right. But we have videos every week, uh, highlighting different events that go on in all of our buildings. Uh, we have monthly, uh, videos that are just classroom oriented, uh, that go out and show different things that are taking place in the classroom. Uh, and then we're gonna be kicking off here soon, a, um, the monthly blog with our superintendent. So. Give a recap of things that are going on in our district.
I'm gonna hit on that real quick. You've got a pretty good group right now.
We do.
From superintendents to principals.
Yeah.
It's, it's formed up pretty nicely.
Yeah, we have. That's, uh, that's again, one of the things that we're proud of is, uh, there's been a lot of changes made here in the last several years.
Change isn't easy.
It's not easy. It's difficult and it scares people.
Right.
Uh, but in the position that we're in right now, we are very happy. The people that we have in their positions that are leading our district. Uh, we believe that they are invested in our students. We believe that they're invested in our community. And that we believe that they're gonna be here for a long time and that's very important to us.
I'm gonna hit on one specifically because this guy was my class president. He was our backup quarterback. And you know, we, I graduate and go military and he goes off somewhere and who knows where he's at. And now he's out leading cheerleading out from Peaches on Friday night. And I'm just laughing because I've known Bellcat. Since we were eight years old. And these kids are like, oh, we love Mr. Bell. What, what a steal to get him back home.
Yeah, we were really fortunate. Um, you know, we knew it, you know, we stayed in touch with him because he's a Martinsville graduate and had a success story. So.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, you know, the people over Clay City loved him.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, we've just happened to stand to always say, when you coming back to Martinsville? And he says, well. He said, I'd love to end my career in Martinsville. And so we stayed in close contact with him. And, uh, we, you know, when the situation was right for him and what was right for us, uh. We were tickled to death that he was interested in. We're just happy as we be to have him back here.
And he comes from a family.
Oh, absolutely.
Ron and his mom.
And you know him. He's very smart.
Oh, yeah.
He is very smart.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, but he loves kids.
He took a lot of classes that I did not. So let's just, let's clear the air. He, he certainly, I, I was told that one of the first questions he asked coach was, you still wear the gold pants, right? So, yeah, he gets it. Jeff gets it. Uh, he's saying, he's, he's doing this weight program stuff, same as I, same, same time and everything. So.
Yeah.
Another one of your products that came through the system, so. The, the, the changes, I mean, to see them on, I, I knew what they were, but to see them written down on paper, it, it's really. Students wise, that's the backbone and you guys are doing everything you can, not only to try to bring kids back home like Jeff.
Right.
Um, but recognizing some of the things that they've done in the community. And we've had some in here and just this past year seems like a lot of great things have taken place for our students and some of the accomplishments they've had.
But there's so many things to promote. There's so many good things going on.
Yeah.
And so I think it's our task, uh, as school leaders to make sure that that information gets out to the public.
Right.
And I think we're doing a really good job of that. I think we've really improved in that and, uh, we recognize different student groups at the beginning of each of our school board meeting.
Right.
It gives them an opportunity to promote their programs. Uh, so, you know, it's, uh, it's just part of the plan. You have to sell yourself. You have to promote these kids. These kids do awesome work. They do awesome, have awesome achievements. Uh, you know, the partnership that we have with Ann McGowan now and Habitat for Humanities, building houses.
Mr. Bowlen's all over that too.
Partnership. You know, and so those people need to be recognized. They, they need to be promoted and that's what we're trying to do.
You're doing a good job of it. Um. We had Molly Stout and the Riley Marathon kids in here. Just, they're phenomenal.
Yeah, they are.
I mean, we can only do so much for them, but we're trying. But she sat right here and was shooting ideas and I'm like, you need, you need to sit here. That is an amazing young lady and, and, and everybody associated with that group just seems like a great group of folks. So. Good work. Um, it's, to me, it's, it's, it's night and day.
Yeah.
And it's, it's very visible. Um, moving forward though. You have an election in November and after that, after you win that. You got some other things you want to accomplish or continue. Can you get into those a little bit?
We can. Uh, you know, if I, uh, am fortunate enough to be able to continue in this position, you know, I look forward to it. You know, people ask, you know, why are you doing this? And, you know, I've worked for the school district for fifty years.
Fifty years.
Uh, it's in my blood. It's in my system and, uh, I really don't want to give that up. I, I still enjoy it. As I said earlier, it's not work. You know, when you enjoy doing something like this. So, yeah, we have some things that, you know, we would like to accomplish, uh, obviously. Um, we want to continue, uh, you know, with promoting our programs. Uh, we're always concerned about enrollment. Not like it used to be, Kevin, when everybody that lived in your district went to your schools.
Right.
You know, it's a fight right now. You have to basically recruit kids. You have to recruit. And, uh, so we're always, we've put a lot of effort, uh, in that. Uh, as you know, our enrollment over the course of the last, uh, seven or eight years has dropped considerably.
Yep.
So we're fighting that. Some of that is demographics that we can't really control. Uh, but some of that is the culture of your schools. And so. Uh, one of our missions, now that we have people in place that we want in place, uh, is to, you know, obviously have some consistency, develop some.
Stability.
Stability. Uh, and then we want to create a culture inside our buildings, uh, that makes it fun to attend school there. That makes it fun to work there. Uh, so it kinda goes hand in hand, uh, you know, with promoting the kids, creating the culture, uh, keeping your staff, keeping the, the people that work for you. Uh, and so that's one of our main focuses as we move forward here.
Well, I, like, say to me, from this chair, I've, I've seen both sides of it now. And I won't get into specifics, but it's night and day to me. Um, what you guys have done, yeah, Bethany was along the whole way. One family in particular, Bill Siderwitz, what you guys have done for him to bring him back on a football field that was named after him, that he wasn't allowed to step on, was the. Biggest dumb thing I've ever seen in my life. And he got to do the coin toss the other night and, um. Every day is a gift for all of us and who knows how long we've got Mr. Siderwitz with us and just being honest. And to get that out of the way and let him get back on there, that, that brought a tear to my eye up in the booth and I didn't tell anybody that because. That guy used to chase me all over that field and yelling at me.
Yeah.
It's, um, the stability and, um, well, I mean, you look at it, just name a few, look at Randy Taylor, pretty much. And he's still successful and went to Mooresville. Joe Siderwitz, very successful up at Center Grove. You know, and these are some of the people that got pushed out the door one way or another. And. You're bringing people like that back, the Jeff Bells and Eric around and things like that. And that's what this community needs. They need stability. And, you know, and I keep talking about football, but. I guarantee you, there are schools in this, in our immediate area. That are, was in the same similar situation we were a few years ago and their football programs got hot. That attracts kids. That attracts families. There's families for that, there are generations of families that grew up here and now playing in Monrovia. Now playing Mooresville and then football feeds the system with money. And I'm talking the school programs for games and events and team sports and things like that. Not talking curriculum and things like that. When you're, when you're successful there and you have a good program, not talking wins and losses, success comes in different varieties. You know that as well as me. But when you can put a good product in front of these families, in front of these kids and bring them back, it only makes your whole district stronger. And, and everything you guys are trying to do, you're working that way and that's what I love about it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a culture. As we said, it's a culture.
Yes, sir.
And, um, I know going back to Coach Siderwitz, you were with the coin flip, uh, last Friday night. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Kip Stags for the idea of that. And, uh, you know, he's had several of those, uh, this year for our home games. Uh, it's all great because it's all bringing back people that used to be.
Yeah.
Important parts of our, you know, school system. Um, but I know for Coach Siderwitz himself, uh, that was a wonderful night. Uh, he really appreciated that. And, uh, he told me that that's the best he felt about being back at Martinsville High School in many, many years.
Yeah.
So, uh, it was, it was heartfelt for him.
I could tell and there's hundreds of young men that went through his program that I'm sure. Uh, well, we did that program in here for him that night. We had fifty in here. I'm still loving, I'm still hearing him calling us an ass from all the way inside the field.
Yeah.
And running, yeah, running at you with the forearm. Back then you could do that and not go to jail. So.
Yeah, I know.
But, um, he's just one of a kind and for the change, the changes that you've implemented. Things like that wouldn't have happened if you didn't do that. And, and that's, you talk about the transparency and the, and the, and the structure and everything that you're trying to do. That's a byproduct of it.
Well, I think, um, you know, we're a large district, obviously. Uh, we have over six hundred employees in our district. We're the largest employer here in Morgan County. Uh, so we have a lot of people and we need people that don't live in Martinsville. Martinsville citizens can't fill our staff.
Right.
We have a lot of great teachers. We have a lot of great staff members. We have great leaders that do not live in Martinsville. And that's great. And we'll always want those people. But we also feel like we need Martinsville people, people that live here, people that, uh, our community knows to also be leaders and be teachers. In our district.
Right.
And I think that's how you gain trust. You know, you gain trust by having people in the community, leading our school that everyone else knows. You know, they know Eric Bowlen. Eric Bowlen has been here for thirty years. People know Eric Bowlen, so they know they can trust him.
City Councilman also.
The whole thing. And they know Jeff Bell and they know the Bell family. So having those kind of people incorporated. With some outside people, I think is very important. At least that's what we feel is very important. And that's why we've gone this route and then I think it's made a difference in the way we're running our schools.
Short amount of time, you've done a lot of good things for our community and, um. When is it? When is the election?
Election is November eighth.
November eighth.
November eighth.
But. Early, early voting starts Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
This next coming Wednesday, the twelfth.
And I know my voter card's good now.
That's right. Corrected that address.
I've done that twice now.
Yeah, so, yeah. Starting Wednesday, you can go to the admin building and go in and vote. No sense in waiting in line on Tuesday, November eighth.
Right? I bet I, some of us traditionalists like going on election day.
There's options.
What now? I know you did the sports and everything, but politics, man, I would never do that.
Again, right, again.
Yeah, right.
People have no idea and you've, this is your third, second election, third election?
This will be my second election.
Second election. Have no idea what goes on in the. The roller coaster.
Oh, oh, yeah.
In, uh. Pat Hanson always said, he always told himself, run like you're losing every day, run like you're losing. But you know, you can, you get to feel, um, five thousand people, we're winning. And you get complacent for a minute and then you look around and you're like, I'm gonna get my teeth kicked in.
Yeah. Well, you know, you just don't know because you don't know who's gonna go out and vote. So it's, it's fun. It's a game. Uh, you know, it's, it's not easy. It's hard work. It takes a lot of volunteers. It takes a lot of people to help you out. You. You can't run an election of any kind by yourself, so you have a lot of good people helping you with that.
You have a lot of amazing people working for you too.
I do. Yeah, I do.
Yeah, you have a good crew.
Yeah.
I've met a few of them.
Have a very good crew, yeah. Sure you have.
Don, I think you're great for the community. Obviously fifty years of service. Uh, in education and athletic wise. I don't know if anybody around here can top that.
I feel like, um, I, I feel pretty confident in saying that I spent more hours working at Martinsville High School than anyone else has.
Right.
Cause I spent forty-six years at Martinsville High School. You know, most of those years, um, you know, you were coaching and being an athletic director, working seventy, eighty hours a week and.
I'm interrupting you because Wes Knox is talking about your driver ed stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I can contribute some of one of my driving skills to Don.
Yeah. That goes back, that's, those were great times.
That was a while though. I forgot about that.
Yeah. And, and I'm really serious. I, I taught science. I, I taught health. I taught physical education. I taught driver education. And, uh, there's no question in my mind that physical educate, our driver education was the most important class I ever taught.
Yeah.
I, I really thought that was important. I, I hate the fact that, uh, driver education is not still.
Oh, yeah, I don't get that. I, I tell you what, I love driver's ed until I found out that my driver's ed driving teacher. It's John Coons. And you don't want to go, you don't want to do that. Cause I seen him slap Jason LaRue's head off almost driving. And that's just John Coons, you know, and you didn't want to make a mistake driving with him.
You know, that's funny because I think most students remember who the driver education teacher was.
I remember. I remember having to learn to change tire in front of the high school there. I was like, there's no way I'm gonna be able to do this.
You had to change the tire.
Yeah, he wouldn't, he, that was it. If you couldn't change your tire, you wouldn't pass.
Oh, yeah, that's true. I had coach and I had, uh, John Coons.
Yeah.
Coach Coons and man, you didn't want to make mistakes, trust me.
Did you have Jack Nash at all?
No, I didn't, but he was there for a very long time.
For a long time.
I think you have my older brother and sisters, Raleigh and Chelly, yeah. So he's a big tall guy.
Yes, he was.
Yeah.
I think he, he always said he was five foot twenty-one inches.
Jim said I had to go sideways for drivers. There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was one of the funner classes, but like you said, it was probably the most important. Light hearted in times in the classroom, but.
Sure.
And we had those machines you could sit in.
Simulators.
Fun stuff.
Yeah, the driving range.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what era you were in, uh, Kevin going back, but, uh, you know, we used to have CB radios in the cars.
Yeah.
And that's how we communicated from car to car.
On the course.
With the CB radio.
Yeah.
And then the truckers out on thirty-seven found our station. And then they'd start saying car number four.
Right.
You know, you need to go faster and then it had to go to a different communication system, but great stories back then.
Uh, didn't even find the driver's ed book that was the cover. Dropped off, I wrecked my moped and dropped on the road. Some road wreck. Martinsville High School wouldn't teach me driver ed program. Sorry to hear that, Mike.
Yeah.
That's a lot of, a lot of fond memories there and you've been involved. I forgot about the driver's ad. That's crazy.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great time.
Yeah. You coached some good basketball teams too. I want to throw that out there a long way.
Yeah, we've had some.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, uh, really lucky, you know, uh, in the time that I've been here. I, I believe that, uh, we had our greatest days of Martinsville High School. And I'm very fortunate to be a part of that. You know, fifty years covers a lot of time and not all those years were great years. We, we had some struggles.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but we really, uh, I was fortunate to be here when we had a lot of success, a lot of great athletes, a lot of, a lot of big time, great coaches.
Right.
Uh, who were very, um, you know, they were very animated. They were very into their sport. But when it got right down to it, they believed in the big picture and they knew what was right and what was wrong and how to support everybody. That you, you would always see your football coaches at basketball games, your basketball coaches at your football games. Like you said, we used to have that summer weight program and that was all the sports and every.
Every coach was involved. Every coach.
No football player out there. They were just all Martinsville High School athletes.
Yep. I, I don't know if they do that still. I think except everything's so specialized now.
It is specialized.
But man, you, you had, we had wrestlers, we had football, we had track, we had baseball players. Every basketball players, everybody was involved.
Yeah, they were.
And we didn't play one sport. We played, uh.
You played them all.
You guys invented games for us to beat on each other and we had fun with it.
Yeah.
It was a good time.
Yeah. You know, we were talking, uh, Kevin also, I, we got a couple more minutes.
Yeah, we're good.
I don't, whatever you've got.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, mention this, that one of the things that we're looking forward to moving forward here. Is, um, we started here this past year with what we're calling our strategic planning.
Okay.
Uh, and, um, we had a, an architectural company come in and take a look at all of our buildings. Uh, you know, we have ten school buildings plus we have our administrative office. Have, uh, I can give you a quiz. We could play a game like Price is Right. How old are our buildings?
Eighty-one.
But they're.
The high school.
They're.
Nineteen eighty-one.
No.
Nineteen eighty.
No, we moved to high school in seventy-seven.
Okay, Raleigh graduated eighty-one. He was the first graduate in class seventy-seven. I might stand corrected.
Um, but you know, we, we had architectural firms come in and, uh, evaluate all of our buildings. And, uh, give us an idea of what, you know, we should really be concerned about. Uh, how long it's gonna last before we have to repair some of the infrastructure, some of the important things. Uh, how much that's gonna cost us. And we've done that for all of our buildings, so, uh, part two of this, once we have this information now is for us to sit down. Uh, as a board and as a group of administrators in our district and try to prioritize. And, uh, you'll see where we're gonna go and what's most important to us and what we're gonna do concerning some of our buildings.
Sure.
Uh, we have, um, our oldest building would be.
North School.
Well, we don't have North School anymore.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So it'd be Poston Road.
Green Township.
Green Township.
And believe it or not, that is eighty-three years old.
Wow.
And our youngest building. Would be south.
South, yeah.
And that's, uh, over thirty years old.
That doesn't seem fair. That's not right.
Yeah.
Cause that's, that was.
Well, we have, you know, we're getting ready to build a lot more houses. So we have a lot of kids coming in, so we kind of.
Are you allowed to drop that knowledge like that just out of the blue? Talking about subdivisions.
Yeah, that's, that's part of it though. I mean, you know, when we do our strategic planning. You know, we're looking at possibly, uh, up to four hundred to four hundred and fifty, you know, houses coming into our city limits here. And that's gonna alter what we do with our school district.
That's information that's not been shared yet via this channel. So that is some things that, uh, I've teased them on, but yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we've, we've heard about at least four hundred coming in and everything. And I want to say systemic in a good way because. You gotta have the tax base. You gotta have jobs. You gotta have houses. You gotta have kids. And increase your, everything and ma- and make your schools better.
Right.
One step at a time.
Yeah, enrollment is very important. Uh, people probably don't realize this, but. Teacher salaries are tied directly to enrollment because that's the state money that goes to teacher salaries.
Right.
You know, tax money doesn't pay for teacher salaries.
Right.
So enrollment is very important and that's why we have to be aggressive with our enrollment and try to, uh, increase it. But we're looking forward to some growth, uh, here in the community and growth with our school system as we move forward, but. That's a, that, that strategic planning is gonna be very important, gonna get community involvement in that. Uh, to see how we want to go so that we do have a plan for what we're gonna be doing three years from now, five years from now and ten years from now.
Almost like a city's comprehension plan.
It is. It's exactly the same thing.
Sure. You, you have to.
Yeah.
Especially nowadays. So many of these programs are, are. Working so close with their cities and their communities and they're growing together and it, you fall behind on that. It takes a long time to get back out of it.
Right.
Uh, Julie Reeves, I don't know if you know her, just, just, and you said she just answered your question. Okay.
Okay.
Does the school system get money from property tax? Cause we hear that all set a lot on horse time.
Well, we, we certainly get, uh, school system gets pro- property tax money.
Yeah.
And, uh, that goes into our, uh, a part of the budget, our operations budget, which helps pay for everything that doesn't involve the classroom.
Right.
So which would involve our, obviously buildings, social help, buys, et cetera.
Things are gonna change still in this area and we, we need to stay with it. And I think it's, it's, everybody's complaining about the interstate and things like that and construction and we know it's paying the butt. But what's coming, I think the city's gonna, it's, it's gonna start turning the corner soon.
I believe so too. I think it's very exciting.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's exciting for the city. I think it's exciting for our school district.
Right.
Uh, so we have to take advantage of it, uh, and we have to plan ahead, which I'm, I know the city's doing, and the district is doing that. But, uh, we should see some growth here and we should see some more money coming in and, uh, with growth and. Enrollment, you can do things.
Well, the board has certainly built the base, uh, and what is needed for our community and our s- school district. With what you have in place as far as principals and superintendent and board members. You guys have done an amazing job with that. And I think it shows with what's going on in the community, so.
Well, we've had, we've had a lot of turnover, as you know.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we've had, in the four years that I've been on the school board, we've had four different superintendents.
Right.
And we've had four different high school principals. And so as I said earlier, this is very important. We really believe right now that we have the people in place in our district that we want leading our schools in our district. And so now we can get some, create some continuity, get some stability. Start improving and growing and, you know, setting some goals that we as a team be consistent with.
I appreciate you guys. From our end of it. For allow.
Well, I was just saying, you mentioned just real, I don't know which one of you have mentioned it, but real briefly early. On about, um, the connection with Habitat.
Yes.
What other community connections? Do we currently have on, and which, and maybe ones that you're looking forward to maybe?
Well, first of all, yeah, first of all, going back to the city, I, I think it's very important that the school district. Has a relationship, a strong relationship with the city.
Right.
Because again, we're the biggest employer here in Morgan County.
And, and that's for hard for people to understand that, that the largest employer in this community in Morgan County is Martinsville School District. That, that's a lot of jobs.
It, it's interesting and this again is not to answer your question, Bethany, just yet, but. Um, Mooresville has more students than Martinsville. But we employ more people. Because we have ten buildings, which is more than what they have. They have seven.
Right.
Uh, we cover, believe it or not, uh, we, our square footage is two hundred and fifty-seven thousand square, or excuse me. Two hundred and fifty-seven square miles.
Square miles.
Is our school district. Mooresville School District is sixty square miles.
Wow.
So we have to employ a lot more people.
They're convinced.
Even though their enrollment, their district enrollment is greater than ours. We have more. Have more buildings, we have more space, we have more bus drivers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Makes sense.
Yeah. But we, it's important that we partner with the city and, um, we've got a good relationship with the city. Uh, so we hope to grow that and continue. I think it's important that we know what their contingency plans are for the future so that we can. Cooperate with them and grow as well with them. Um, but we, you know, we reach out to all kinds of. Have, uh, students that do internships. Internships are very valuable to our students. Uh, so yeah, we're re. Reach out. Obviously, you know, we're a small town here, but, um, we have that small town atmosphere, but we think big. Uh, but we do get cooperation from somebody in town here, they know.
Well, what I started to say a little bit ago was, um, again, from this side of the ledger. We, we weren't allowed to do things there for a while. But since things have changed. Um, when you have a media outlet, like, that's what we are. And you allowed us back in to cover the events and I have teachers and students and, uh, from all across. That stuff's important to the community. Now, why it was seen in a different light, that's the, that's all on them. But you guys at least sat us down and talked to us and brought us in and said, here's what we want. Here's what we're gonna do moving forward. And the response, I mean, Friday night games, we got people all over the country. Martinsville grads watching the games, listening to the games. I got people that I have not talked to in twenty years that come to me and say. He's doing the game this weekend, you know, Kevin, we, we, they love what Rewind does, but then they listen to us. And that's what, that's the, that's. They're right and it's hilarious. And I know I'm being selfish by talking about what we do, but. That happened because of you guys. You guys opened the door for a lot of things in this community and it's just step one. And moving forward, you get so much more you're trying to do. And the transparency is, it, it's unbelievable. And, and like I said, I didn't get vocal with it, what was going on, but I've had teachers contact me. And just, hey, whatever we can help or whatever, you know, and it's just amazing that they weren't allowed, they weren't allowed to do that. And could you imagine shutting off a TV or a radio station? It just, that's just, it's silly to me, but that's just step one and that's all I know because. Once that door was open, so much has changed. And, and to see it on this paper right here, what all you guys have done, it's amazing. In such a short amount of time. There you go. Building relationships, build trust. There you go. That Julie girl's pretty sharp.
She's pretty sharp. Yeah. She's, she's, uh, also in education, so she knows the education business.
She's a sweetheart and I remember her when she was knee high to a grasshopper, so. She's a good, yeah, good, good person. Don, it's coming up and. I gotta sign out my yard. I've supported you. I remember when you first ran and. I'm gonna continue to do that because you didn't promise me anything. You didn't promise me anything at all. I knew what type of character you were, man you were from years ago. And you, you put a, put your foot in a lot of our butts when we were kids. But like I said, there's. Some of us may not have made it without programs that you instituted at the school and, and, and made us do and. Now you're doing that for our school board and, and the whole district. And I don't see any reason to change that.
I appreciate it.
And I know if I had an issue, I could call you up and say, hey, we need to sit down. We need to go to Andy's and get some breakfast and chit chat.
Absolutely.
And, and we would.
Then open to everybody, right?
And it's, it's open to everybody.
Yeah.
Uh, I will give you my cell phone number. If there's anyone out there that has any school issue.
Yeah.
Feel free to give me a call. And I know the other board members are the same way, but you know, that's another thing that we did is, you know, you can contact a board member directly, going through our email address. That didn't used to be that way. It used to.
That was the craziest thing ever.
We used to have a school board email, but it may not get to us. It was gonna be, you know, looked at first.
So you got to see all my emails? That's classic. No, you didn't. You didn't. I've got them somewhere. One of these days I'll write a book.
Yeah, but you know, my, my cell phone is three one seven nine six five eight one two one. I'm open. So if.
You know, that's, that's part of.
And I, you know, people, you know, people question, don't you get tired of that? And, and I don't. And even if somebody is mad about a certain situation, that just means they're passionate. That just means they care. And you know, my job is to listen to them and I can't always give them the answer they want.
Right.
I can't always satisfy them. No, you're not. But I can always listen to them and I will always listen to them. And we will always look into it.
What are some other ways that someone can, you know, talk to you or find you even before the election if they have? Where can we, where can they, where will they see you, I guess, in the community, is what I'm trying to say?
Well, obviously I'm out and about quite a bit. A lot of the school activities, yeah, school games. I would say YMCA soccer, but we just finished that. We had our last championship match this evening here before I came over here. So but I'm at the YMCA, but I try to keep politics out of the YMCA. But the best way to get ahold of me is through the email address or through my cell phone. But I am out and about in the community.
Are you, are you handling the basketball situation at the Y again this year?
I am. Yeah.
Few years ago, I had a three-point sheet contest. I wasn't in shape out there and I didn't do as well.
Tell you've gotten a lot better shape than you were a couple of years ago. Yeah. So you're on.
I'm ready. You had three-point sheet contests? I still got it. No, they still got it.
We had.
They used to do free throw contests and he implemented that. Steve Alford, I guarantee you, those guys like him and Sam. We'd shoot a billion, what was it? You had to hit a hundred or whatever day or?
Yeah, you had, you had to make a hundred free throws a day.
Yeah.
But then, you know, we always had them coming in and how many could you hit in a row?
Yeah.
Had to thunder in the hundred.
Oh, yeah.
Fifty, fifty, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Yeah.
I remember that stuff.
Yeah.
Good stuff though. I mean, that's that's what kept you, kept you coming back for more.
Yeah.
You know? And then that's what you're doing in this community. And I, I harp on it. Got a decent program, sport athletic, boys and girls. Also standing. It starts.
We've got a great band, band.
Mr. Bell?
We, yeah.
Yeah.
He does a fantastic job. And I just wanna, you know, I just wanna say here, and I probably should have said this very early is we're really happy with our staff. You know, you know, we got over six hundred employees. Our staff do an amazing job here. Again, we've, it's not easy in this district because of geographically how spread out we are. It makes things very difficult.
Right.
But we have a tremendous staff and I know everybody worked really hard over the course of the summer. Be ready to have a smooth transition into the school year. And so far, knock on wood, it's, we've had a great start. Hard to believe that we're, you know, a quarter of the way through the school year. But we are. You know, the spirit is high. You come to a Friday night football game.
Student section is packed and they're all over it.
But I mean, they're having fun.
Yeah.
You know, and Mr. Bell going over there and, you know, I believe and all that kinda stuff. I mean, they, you know, they, they're waiting for him. They're waiting for his moment, you know? And, but it's fun again. And that's, that's what we want. You know, we want kids to enjoy coming to school. We want kids to understand the importance of learning, the importance of reading. And so that's, that's what we're shooting for. We're shooting for that culture.
It's awesome. You know, I got, you got my support. And I don't, I don't mind saying that online. And hopefully we've gained support tonight and there's a sign out my yard. Wanna stay and as long as you're running, that's, that'll be there and I'll always support you.
I'd also like to say here before we drop off, just to remind everybody that we have two school board seats that are up for election.
Yes, I wanna talk about one of those.
Yeah. And if you live in our school district, you can vote for both of those seats.
Yeah.
So, yeah, as long as you live in our school district, then you can vote and we have two seats up for.
Julie, he did already answer that, but Don, you wanna answer it again? Does school board control or does the?
The Indiana Department of Education controls. Yeah. So, you know, we've had, yeah, yeah. I think that became a popular question when we were going through this pandemic.
Oh, yeah.
Schools were shut down.
Oh, yeah.
Were being required and et cetera. So it got a little heated. Thank goodness that we're past those times and, you know, we, we still are facing, you know, the pandemic. We still have COVID present. But it's not like it was at one particular time. And we're just, I, I think one of the things too, Kevin, if we can toot our horn here a little bit is
Toot away.
We, we made it our goal a year ago, after the pandemic, when we weren't in school. We made it our goal to be in school so that the kids would have a chance to be in front of their teachers. We've learned, we always knew that, but if anybody had any questions about that, that's one thing that the pandemic caught us, taught us. Is how important it is that our students be in front of the teachers. That's where learning takes place. And we were very happy a year ago.
Yeah.
Even though we still were fighting COVID.
Yeah.
And many schools were shut down and many schools were on different altering schedules.
Yep.
We maintained all year to have our kids open to coming in.
Kudos to you guys for doing that because I had one graduate IU and one of the classes she was taking was Arabic. And halfway through her, you know, four years of college, COVID hits. And she dealt with it at the end of her junior year and the start of her senior year, she flat told him, I'm not gonna pass this class sitting in front of a computer, listen to you talk. I have to be face to face.
Yeah.
And luckily, by chance, it changed and, and they got to go face to face. But there's a lot of kids that didn't happen to. And that's sad.
Absolutely. Yeah, it is. As you know, schoolchildren across the nation are behind.
Yeah.
That's a challenge. So try to get everybody caught back up.
Mr. Lips, I appreciate the effort and, and what you and your school board are doing. And I, and I pray that moving forward and you guys have the best luck with.
Thanks, Kevin. It's been my pleasure to work for the school district and serve our community.
Bethany, you have anything you wanna add?
Let us know if you wanna sign, right?
That's right. Yeah.
Yeah. Any of us.
Get ahold of Bethany.
Still putting out yard signs. We can still use you at polling sites if anybody's interested.
Where did you get that old school artist shirt? I gotta ask that. Cause that does look.
I've had it forever.
Yeah, I'm sure you have. That's, that's old school artist right there. Yeah. She can fit into shirts that she wore back then.
Barely.
Not I. No, I can't do that. So.
Well, I've got you signed up here for the three-point contest.
And we, we may be able to carry that live this year.
I got, I got a great story about the three-point contest.
Oh, we gotta hear it.
You know, we have this for Y-ball.
Yeah.
We have a three-point contest.
Yeah.
And so we decided one year that we were gonna let the referees, which is Bobby Denton and Don Deaton, enter the contest.
Oh, yeah.
Because, you know, the young kids don't think the old guys can do anything.
Sure.
Right.
So, and of course, you know, Bobby Denton's a great athlete.
Oh, yeah.
And Donnie Deaton can play basketball.
Oh, yeah.
Shoot it. So Donnie was getting warmed up. So he was all fired up. So he's down on the other end. He's getting warmed up. And he worked so hard at getting warmed up that by the time it was time for him to come down, he had no energy left. And he had like twenty-five shots and hit three, I think.
Right.
I mean, it was the lowest score we had made. Cause he was flat out worn out.
Right. Yeah, you, there's only so much in the tank nowadays, you know, at this age. Now, the year that I had lady or whatever, I don't know what was up there, but Meredith Deckard, I think won it that year.
Well, she's the best shooter we have in town.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, she can shoot it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm not sure. I know Phil tries to take credit for that. I'm not sure where that came from.